Seniors in Great Neck. And similarly, Palm Beach is a snowbird. You know, they're like a flock of flamingos down there. And they're everywhere.
Just similarly.
And running around to early bird dinners. And they're kind of free. And they're free to be kids again. You know, I went to visit the Burbank senior artists colony.
Oh, yes.
When the book came out last June. And God, they're wonderful people. Lively and great. And yeah, so.
We've had Tim Carpenter on the show, the young man.
Oh, he's amazing.
Isn't it something? And he was so open to the artistic instincts of these people, many of whom are not professionals. They are not lifelong writers or painters. They have come to it late.
Yeah. But just, you know, it's a lively world. And assisted loving is about the romantic side of that.
Yes.
And the fact that people my age are often, I find, appalled to even think about romance in their senior parents.
Well, yeah.
But I mean, what the society we're living in now with Viagra and Botox and internet dating and, you know, the other thing is that I think since Sex and the City, the conversation about sex has been very free.
Yes, indeed.
And everybody talks about dating. It's become the national pastime.
Well, I think for today's seniors too, they really are shedding some cultural taboos to be out there in the dating world because you have to be open and honest when you're in your 70s or your 80s. Because who's got the time?
Yeah, it's true. Actually, you're right. You're right. And it's also, I learned a lot about men versus women in terms of what they're looking for in their later years.
Did you find the women kind of predatory?
There's that. There is that element. You know, have you heard the term casserole widows?
Yeah, so as you show up at the funerals.
Yes.
Hello, nice to meet you. Are you free tonight?
Yes, yes. And there was a funny movie, Boynton Beach Club, that was about that. So predatory, yes, because demographically there are more women than men.
Yes, a lot of pressure. What is it, 10 to 7, I believe?
Yep, that's what I wrote in the book.
Right. I did read it, Bob.
Yeah. And when I wrote the book, I did, the book does have some basic information that I reported about the demographics. And so, yes, predatory for sure. In fact, I was just down in Boca in Florida doing a presentation about the book. And I found out that this woman from my hometown, who knew my dad, took up with this man from my hometown, who knew my dad, because her husband was gone a few months.
Right.
And now they're together. And in some way, I find that both titillating and shocking and frightening, you know, that this will to readjust when you're 80 years old to a new person. And so, you asked about the women being predatory. The truth is that a lot of women don't want anything to do with another man. They've nursed men through being sick. And they've, you know, because of their generation, they were always the caretakers of the home. And, you know, the men can be big babies. And so, they have fun. The women have their bridge clubs and their social groups. And I was talking to one who said she wouldn't trade her cat for a man.
Well, men are a lot of trouble. You know, we get older and we get set in our ways. And, you know, we've got to have that baseball game on. Or, don't bother me, it's the Discovery Channel. You know, they're gonna wake up a mammoth.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, it's, some of them really are liberated. And they don't need it. I think that we think it's funny to talk about these predatory women. It's just funnier.
I agree. The human condition is we do not like to be alone. We are social animals. And the idea that you can let love back into your life is, I find that very nourishing and hopeful, if you will.
I do too. You know, what's interesting about the book is that, as I was saying, I was very single. And it really, it becomes a twin journey because in this year that my father was out there dating again and looking for love, I found love for the first time in my life. So now I've been married five years.
Isn't that great?
And he got to meet the guy before he died. And so, I really think that in some way, his hopefulness and his, he was so set on romance, he needed to put on that white dinner jacket and go out on New Year's Eve. And he needed to sing to a woman in the elevator or dance with her on the balcony, whatever. He needed it.
Well, your late mother appreciated that with him.
Oh, yeah.
You write wonderfully about them singing to each other and dancing on a balcony.
Yeah. I mean, it was, in a certain way, it was not an intellectual relationship they had, but it was very romantic.
Yeah.
He needed that. And then she was sick for a long time. You also have to understand that one of the reasons he hit the ground running three months after she died was that there were eight years of weakness. And we had a tremendous amount of fear in our family for her. And it was, it was very devastating. And so, instead of maybe mourning appropriately, he was released.
I understand.
And, you know, my brother judged him pretty harshly in a certain way for that. But I was on the side of fun. You know, I'm so self-involved too, I could understand why he wanted to play.
We're gonna pick up here. We have a few messages that we want to share with our audience. And we'll be right back.
Thank you and good morning to everyone. This is the City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 22nd. We're still waiting for a quorum. We have eight members, two more to arrive shortly. I want to make a special presentation to Joya DeFoe. I have a check to present to our Treasurer, Joya DeFoe, for $1 million. And this check was received from AEG, courtesy of Tim Lowiki through our assistance of City Attorney Carmen Chutanich. And I want to present this to you. This check for $1 million is part of the compensation provided to the City of Los Angeles from AEG Staples for the Michael Jackson Memorial. There's additional compensation that they are providing, but this is the check for $1 million that I'm giving to you, our Treasurer.
Thank you.
Here in City Council chambers, before we begin our actual meeting, to make sure that you know that it'll be in good hands as you deposit this.
Today.
Today, in the General Fund of the City of Los Angeles.
Will do.
Joya DeFoe, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, and you've got your security with you to make sure that check safely gets to the bank. Thank you.
Public right here, so people can see it?
Mr. Labange.
Would you like to do it from the public platform so everyone can know you're good?
Joya, if you can join Mr. Labange over here at the...
I'll switch with you.
It's all right. We did the official presentation. She has it. So we're still looking for the quorum, so if we can get Mr... We want to thank Mr. Cardness, Mr. Weisar, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Westen, I'm Councilmember Zine. Ms. Hahn is now here.
Mr. President, Joya DeFoe right here, our Treasurer for the City of Los Angeles.
Joya.
Joya is receiving a check from AEG for over $1 million for services provided by the City of Los Angeles. Joya, thank you. Put that right in the Treasury right away.
Yep, we were on our way.
All right, tell us what this is about.
And let me make sure people understand, this is for the services provided for the Michael Jackson memorial. This is not about the Laker parade yesterday. The Lakers were paying for that. This is in addition to that. So there's a check for $1 million. Thank you, Joya.
A check for $1 million. Say a little more, say a little more.
Thank you, Councilmembers, and just so you know the process, we're going to get it deposited in probably the next 20 minutes. It will be available funds on tomorrow morning.
Very good.
Very well, thank you, thank you.
Give our three senators a big hand. Good job.
Ms. Cardness?
Joya, Joya, one second, please. I know you're in a hurry to deposit that check. Can you answer a question for me, please?
This isn't on the agenda.
Yeah, I know.
No, this is before we begin our official meeting.
We haven't even...
We're going to begin our official meeting. We're waiting for the quorum.
But we haven't called the meeting order, have we?
Mr. Cardness, hold on a minute.
I think somebody just stepped out. Joya, again, please clarify who's the check from?
The check is from AEG Staples.
Kobe Bryant.
It's not from Kobe Bryant. AEG Staples.
The check is made by AEG Inc.
And it's relative to which event? To whether it was a city expenditures?
My understanding is that it's related to last year's services provided by the city in relationship to the Michael Jackson services.
So it seems to be a voluntary contribution on behalf of AEG for some of the costs?
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cardness, that's correct, and I want to thank our City Attorney Carmen Chutanich for bringing this... We need to get this council meeting underway.
We need to get the Treasurer downstairs to deposit this. Give her another hand.
A quick introduction, Mr. Rosenthal, before we begin our official meeting. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Rosenthal, you're going to do a presentation? Hold on a minute.
The two people with me, it's a major moment here. We have two filmmakers from China that have been going and documenting the gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender in China. Somewhere in between total acceptance and non-acceptance, our people are at this very moment. These are two courageous filmmakers who are creating a documentary and facts about people in China. We welcome them to the United States. You're demonstrating tremendous courage by documenting the lives of us who strive for freedom, justice, and equality around the world. We here in Los Angeles, thank you for your commitment to this very important cause. Gentlemen, bless you both.
Thank you.
Okay, here they are, guys and girls.
Thank you. Okay, we now have our quorum. Mr. Clerk, we are now going to go an official session for January 22nd, Tuesday. Please call the roll.
I look on Cardness, Hahn, Weisar, Coretts, Akorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks, second by Mr. Reyes.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Westen, second by Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and it is time for the flag salute.
Very well. Mr. Parks, please lead us in the flag salute. All, please stand in the chambers, please stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We all stand, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, Mr. Clerk, shall we go through the agenda?
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is no action required on item 1, and there is a request to continue items 3, 4, and 5, one day to June 23rd.
3, 4, and 5, continue without objection. 3, 4, and 5 will be continued. On the items, colleagues, any specials? For 1 through 12, colleagues, any specials? Seeing none?
Mr. President, there should be 12 members today. Do you wish to hold the ordinance on number 2?
I think we have 12 members, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Kerkorian is here.
We now have 12 members. Thank you, Mr. Kerkorian. Mr. Weisar?
Number 2 special.
Number 2 special for Mr. Weisar. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Kerkorian?
Number 14.
Number 14. We're not there yet, sir.
Okay.
We're only up to 12, 1 through 12. Seeing no other specials, and we have public hearings on items 1 through 12, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
So on the remaining items, please open the roll. Close the roll, tab, let the vote.
12 ayes.
Next items, please.
Items 13 through 19 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
13 through 19, we have cards?
There are cards on items 13, 15, and 18.
We'll call 13, 15, 18 special. Remaining items, colleagues, any specials?
And the...
13 through 19.
Mr. Kerkorian wanted to call item 14 special?
Mr. Kerkorian, 14, sir. Very well, 14 will be called special. 13, 14, 15, and 18 will be special. Remaining items, please open the roll. Close the roll, tab, let the vote.
13 ayes.
Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item 20 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
On number 20...
And there is a card on that.
We will hold that for the Speaker, special on number 20. Okay, that takes us back...
Mr. President, 17 forthwith, please, after the vote.
We'll open the roll on the remaining items.
There are no other items, Mr. President. It does take counsel back...
17 forthwith. So we're done at number 20, and Mr. Clerk, now, public comment?
That is correct.
All right, public comment time, folks. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley, and we will... Miriam Volger in the San Fernando Valley, and then Donna Piriman in the San Fernando Valley. Ladies?
Yeah, I want to tell you good morning to all. And you people who vote out there, listen to this. If you want to be safe in this country, United States of America, and the state of Los Angeles, don't give in to Obama. He's not my president, because I know what he is. To me, in my opinion, I think he wants to give away and destroy our country, in my opinion. He's... In my opinion, he is not a citizen. In my opinion, he completely avoids any safety for our country. To me, he's not qualified to be president. To me, he was elected based on race, and it should have been based on the person's qualifications. I don't care what you are, what race, creed, color you are, it says in the Bible, we're all created by God. It should have been based on the person able to do the job. And he wants to call in the general now and say, "We cannot stop our withdrawal next summer." Folks, you want the war to come here to the City of Los Angeles, then we can withdraw from Afghanistan if that's what you want. Think about it, folks. And all the 20,000 gun laws we have here, they're so restrictive, you can't even carry unloaded gun, open... Think about it, that you're leaving yourselves open prey here like sheep. So Arizona is doing what we're supposed to do, and Nebraska's falling soon, I hope all the rest of the states do the same, and California does the same. I have nothing against people coming here, I just would hope that they would come here, that we know who they are, because we have sleeper cells now, folks. They came through Arizona. They said they have about 300 Somalis here, and they're ready to go after us here, to blow us up, just like in Israel, Europe, Afghanistan, and Iraq. So, folks, get ready, because I'm telling you, you're giving sanctuary to people you don't know who's here.
Thank you. Donna Piriman?
Yeah, thank you. Our federal government is using our money for politicians' legacies, our mass rail projects like 3010, Subway to the City, C, which governments should be using our money to fix the oil spill, need to keep our country safe from terrorism. Our newest extremist caught says, "The holy war, we come to destroy America." We should ask for our leftist communist president, I believe. Should we fight in Afghanistan or fight them here? We think we should go to pre-11 days. We don't leave Afghanistan. We can't do that. We either fight them there or here. You choose. We need a conservative bar president who will fight terrorism, not coddle terrorist countries who come to attack LA, who come here to attack our beautiful rail projects, who see us as when we're down with budget problems, not watching. Our rail also attacks crime and robbery. We shouldn't ask for public donations for our rail projects, the security part, too. Our city should be using a sales tax to save our city services used by all. The rail projects do not. Not partial tax, when many are losing homes and can't afford high rent, caused by high property taxes, folks. Sales tax increases for city services not be put in reserve or diverted to other projects. Thank you, Lakers, for your praying for the parade. We save our libraries, parks, and wrecks, and also continue furloughs since city employees, like our guards here in City Hall. Makes you feel safe? Not me. And we take away jobs here in one area and bring jobs for transit there. Couldn't we have jobs here, our city government and there, rail? We can have jobs in both areas, paid for transit with public donation. And we need to wear our money for the oil spill. That will affect Los Angeles and everywhere, especially our wealthy population who can use our donations, and politicians. Mr. Rosenthal, do we see a check? For Subway to the Sea? A donation? And Gorilla Gosa? How about yours? Think about it.
Thank you, ladies. Daniel Wright. Daniel Wright?
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, Los Angeles, as legal counsel to the Vandy Camps Coalition. Councilmembers, representatives of the Vandy Camps Coalition, we're here last week to alert all of you of the gross injustice unfolding at the corner of San Fernando Road and Fletcher Drive in northeast Los Angeles. For more than a decade, working with a steering committee of representatives of the northeast community area, the Los Angeles Community College District has planned, passed two bond measures setting aside $60 million of local tax funds, designed and constructed two buildings intended to be the northeast satellite campus of Los Angeles City College at the historic Vandy Camps Bakery. But as construction was nearing completion, Workforce Investment Act funds began flowing in greater amounts to the LA region, and the LA's mayor's office began to eye American Recovery and Reinvestment Act stimulus monies for workforce training. Despite the fact that LA CCD had a plan to open the Vandy Camps campus with a fee-based, profit-oriented set of courses that were not dependent upon the state's budget, which is the traditional source of funding, the LA CCD in early 2009 began to claim that it could not open Vandy Camps due to the state's budget crisis, which is illogical. On item 3 of today's agenda, which is...
...for freedom, justice, and equality around the world. We here in Los Angeles, thank you for your commitment to this very important cause. Gentlemen, bless you both.
Thank you.
Okay, here they are, guys.
Thank you.
Girls, okay? Thank you.
Okay, we now have our quorum. Mr. Clerk, we are now going to go an official session for January 22nd, Tuesday. Please call the roll.
Alacant, Cardinal Hassan Weezer, Corret, Cacorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal Smith, Weston Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks, second by Mr. Reyes.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weston, second by Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and it is time for the flag salute.
Very well. Mr. Parks, please lead us in the flag salute. All, please stand in the chambers, please stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. We all stand, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Okay, Mr. Clerk, shall we go through the agenda?
On the regular agenda, items one through twelve are items for which public hearings have been held, there is no action required on item one, and there is a request to continue items three, four, and five, one day to June 23rd.
Three, four, and five, continue without objection. Three, four, and five will be continued. On the items, colleagues, any specials? For one through twelve, colleagues, any specials? Seeing none?
And, Mr. President, there should be twelve members today. Do you wish to hold the ordinance on number two?
I think we have twelve members, Mr. Clerk. We now have twelve members. Thank you, Mr. Cacorian. Mr. Weezer? Number two special for Mr. Weezer. Any other specials, colleagues? Mr. Cacorian?
Number fourteen.
Number fourteen. We're not there yet, sir.
Okay.
We're only up to twelve, one through twelve. Seeing no other specials, and we have public hearings on items one through twelve, Mr. Clerk?
That is correct.
So on the remaining items, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next items, please.
Items thirteen through nineteen are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Thirteen through nineteen, we have cards?
There are cards on items thirteen, fifteen, and eighteen.
We'll call thirteen, fifteen, eighteen special. Remaining items, colleagues, any specials?
And the thirteen through nineteen. Mr. Cacorian wanted to call item fourteen special?
Mr. Cacorian, fourteen, sir. Very well, fourteen will be called special. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen will be special. Remaining items, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item twenty is an item for which public hearing has not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Uh, number twenty?
And there is a card on that.
We will hold that for the speaker, special number twenty. Okay, that takes us back.
Mr. President, seventeen forthwith, please, after the vote.
Um, we'll open the roll on the remaining items.
There are no other items, Mr. President. It does take count back.
Seventeen forthwith. So we're done at number twenty? And, Mr. Clerk, now, public comment?
That is correct.
All right, public comment time, folks. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley. And we will... Miriam Volger, in the San Fernando Valley. And then Donna Piramont, in the San Fernando Valley. Ladies?
Yeah, I want to tell you good morning to all. And you people who vote out there, listen to this. If you want to be safe in this country, United States of America, and the state of Los Angeles, don't give in to Obama. He's not my president, because I know what he is. To me, in my opinion, I think he wants to give away and destroy our country, in my opinion. He's, uh, in my opinion, he is not a citizen. In my opinion, he, uh, he, uh, completely avoids any safety for our country. To me, he's not qualified to be president. To me, he was elected based on race, and it should have been based on the person's qualifications. I don't care what you are, what race, creed, color you are, it says in the Bible, we're all created by, by God. Should have been based on the person able to do the job. And he wants to call in the, the general now and say, "We cannot, uh, stop our withdrawal next summer." Folks, you want the war to come here to the city of Los Angeles, then we can withdraw from Afghanistan, if that's what you want. Think about it, folks. And all the 20,000 gun laws we have here, they're so restrictive, you can't even carry unloaded gun, open... Think about it, that you're, uh, you're leaving yourselves open prey here, like sheep. So, um, and Arizona is doing what we're supposed to do, and Nebraska's falling soon, I hope all the rest of the states do the same, and California does the same. I have nothing against, uh, people coming here, I just would hope that they would come here, that we know who they are, because we have sleeper cells now, folks, they came through Arizona. They said they have about 300 Somalis here, and they're ready to go after us here, to blow us up, just like in Israel, Europe, Afghanistan, and Iraq. So, folks, get ready, because I'm telling you, you're, you're giving sanctuary to people you don't know who's here.
Thank you. Donna Piramont?
Yeah, thank you. Our federal government is using our money for politi-, uh, politicians' legacies, our mass rail projects like 3010, Subway to the City, C, which, uh, governments should be using our money to fix the oil spill need to keep our, uh, country safe from terrorism. Our newest extremist caught says, "The holy war, we come to destroy America." We should ask for our leftist communist president, I believe. Should we, should we fight in Afghanistan or fight them here? We think we should go to pre-eleven days. Uh, we don't leave Afghanistan. We can't do that. We either fight them there or here. You choose. We need a conservative bar president who will fight terrorism, not coddle terrorist countries who come to attack LA, who come here to attack our beautiful rail projects, who see us as when we're down with budget problems, not watching. Our rail also attacks crime and robbery. We shouldn't ask for public, we should ask for public donations for our rail projects, the security part, too. Our city should be using a sales tax or save our city services, used by all. The rail projects do not. Not partial tax, when many are losing homes and can't afford high rent, caused by high property taxes, folks. Sales tax increases for city services not be put in reserve or diverted to other projects. Thank you, Lakers, for your praying for the parade. We save our libraries, parks, and wrecks, and also continue furloughs since city employees, like our guards here in City Hall. Makes you feel safe? Not me. And we take away jobs here in one area and bring jobs for transit there. Couldn't we have jobs here, our city government and there, rail? We can have jobs in both areas, pay for transit with public donation. And we need to wear our money for the oil spill. That's, which will affect Los Angeles and everywhere, especially our wealthy population who can use our donations, and politicians. Mr. Rosenthal, do we see a check? For Subway to the Sea? A donation? And Gorilla Gosa? How about yours? Think about it.
Thank you, ladies. Daniel Wright. Daniel Wright?
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, Los Angeles, as legal counsel to the Vandy Camps Coalition. Council members, representatives of the Vandy Camps Coalition, we're here last week to alert all of you of the gross injustice unfolding at the corner of San Fernando Road and Fletcher Drive in northeast Los Angeles. For more than a decade, working with a steering committee of, uh, representatives of the northeast community area, the Los Angeles Community College District has planned, passed two bond measures setting aside $60 million of local tax funds, designed and constructed two buildings intended to be the northeast satellite campus of Los Angeles City College at the historic Vandy Camps Bakery. But as construction was nearing completion, Workforce Investment Act funds began flowing in greater amounts to the LA region. And the LA's mayor's office began to eye American Recovery and Reinvestment Act stimulus monies for workforce training. Despite the fact that LA CCD had a plan to open the Vandy Camps campus with a fee-based, profit-oriented set of courses that were not dependent upon the state's budget, uh, which is the traditional source of funding, um, the, uh, LA CCD in early 2009 began to claim that it could not open Vandy Camps due to the state's budget crisis, which is illogical. On item three of today's agenda, which has now been continued to tomorrow, the city of Los Angeles is asked to participate in a scheme to transfer the northeast campus to workforce investment programs funded by this city through the economic stimulus and workforce funds. These programs may be meritorious, but this is not the appropriate location. We have evidence that LA CCD has destroyed six classrooms on the second floor of the Vandy Camps building and put in office space for these programs. That is unjust.
Thank you, sir.
Just thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Some good news. In spite of all the layoffs that the city is suffering through, the city council and the unions managed to get a 5% pay increase that starts this year. Even though it includes 26 furlough days, which is a little over, um, a month of work, that it means there's 10 and a half months of pay raise. In spite of knowing that there was this fire cloud of deficits on a, on the horizon for the city, you still managed to negotiate a pay raise for the city unions. It's a wonderful job, excluding Councilmen Cacorian and Corret. The rest of you have all been sitting here while this, while Rome is burning. And regarding the check that you just made such a great fanfare about, I think it was drawn on the Bank of America account. You know, the bank that was suing the city, one of the banks that are gonna, involved in a $1 billion bond issuance for the, um, payment of the bills, that the council didn't seem to know was a part of the lawsuit, that was on the list of city, was on the list of financial, viable financial institutions that the city could deal with, was one of the banks that, one of the few institutions that issues a letter of credit that's needed to advance the funding, didn't know, didn't know that they had a lawsuit against the city. And then to compound it, they're also in the running for the bonds for the sewer infrastructure. Didn't know. The member of the CEO staff said, "This is a policy that you do every year," or at least last year. Was it done the years before? Didn't know. Fight on, City Council.
Dr. Clyde Williams, please.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Serena, northeast LA. This morning, one of the delays was the interview with the DWP, again, and again, and again, regarding the transfer payment. But that's old history, that's this last fiscal year. How about the next fiscal year? We now have a budget. We now have a long-term strategy, which some people call strategic plan. Where are these going? What is the enforceable transfer for this coming year? Will it be set aside as a spatial fund? They like spatial funds. But in the background, is the budget approved by the council? If it is, then we can start dealing with it, because it conflicts with the long-term strategy. There's major problems. We, we now will have not an adjustment factor, ECAF, as you used to call it, but we'll have pass-throughs. These will go through with just the board, and we'll have to go through 245 again, and again, and again. So, we would like to find out what's going on with the long-term strategy and with the budget. Oh, by the way, whatever happened to coal? Coal was going to be replaced by geothermal, and approvals were made for the Imperial Valley. However, it seems like they have discontinued that. Oh, also, Huron was paid for two years to do a strategic plan, which was never approved. So, we'd like to know whether this long-term strategy is really just a strategic plan in drag or something, because we don't know what's going on. And by the way, I'm a DWP liaison, and I can't even tell my people what's going on. Thank you.
Mick Jackson? Or Mike Jackson?
Or Mickey.
Or Mickey Jackson. All right, Mickey Jackson. Thank you.
By any name, arose by any name. Um, I feel, um, I'm here to urge you once again, please don't go forward with leasing the Vandy Camp, campus. There's investigations commencing, the, uh, the district's own bond oversight committee. If you go forward, if you take the city forward knowingly, knowingly ahead in this, then LA will become culpable in receiving, uh, the, the benefits of illegal bond use. In fact, Los Angeles will be the chief beneficiary of over $7 million of that bond abuse, that there's been in bond abuse. We have documents going back to January 2009, I have, that, uh, the, the city, in the form of the mayor's office, was deeply involved in driving and specifying this bond abuse. The coalition has spent, no, no lack of time making everyone, this city and every other prospective tenant and the district, very aware of what is going on. We do not need to be made party to these lawsuits, because, believe me, there's lawsuits there, and there'll be more. In fact, uh, the Board of Trustees, you can hear on a tape of them saying, "We're going to be sued." And when the city, if the city were to be so foolish as to go forward and do this lease, the city will be part of those lawsuits. Don't vote to be part of the lawsuits. And I'm still concerned about the possibility of ex-offenders at that site. Larry Frank, deputy mayor, said in a meeting last week that there would not be, but we have seen not one document, not one official thing, saying there won't be. Everything in these programs, and I have many documents say ex-offenders. In fact, they're qualifications for some of those appointments. So I don't think two or three words from the mayor's office is enough to assure the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Walnam. That'll be our final speaker and public comment.
Good morning, I'm Ann Walnam, 755 Crane Boulevard, LA 965. I wish to also speak against the proposal for workforce use of the Vandy Camps facility. I was at many, many community meetings when the forward-looking proposal from LACC Vermont Campus was presented to us. We were very enthusiastic, the administration of the college was enthusiastic, the architects were enthusiastic, the forthcoming administrators were enthusiastic, our community was ready. Then suddenly, and not so suddenly, it kind of faded away. And now we have something totally different, we have a charter school on that campus, and we have classrooms that have been destroyed for offices. The community's been betrayed. This is a universal feeling, we've collected a lot of signatures, everyone we speak to feels we've been betrayed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That completes the public comment. Mr. Clerk? Next item, please.
Item two, called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer, number two, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Staff here on this item? Nope, no staff on this item. Colleagues, this is a, uh, a draft ordinance that will add the following provisions to... there he is. Can you just make our colleagues and the public aware of the amendments we're making to our municipal code regarding, uh, illegal depositing of rubbish in our streets?
Certainly. Ted Jordan, Assistant City Attorney, Public Works General Counsel. This ordinance adds a section to our existing law that will include an administrative penalty for folks that, um, violate the ordinance by disposing of rubbish in the streets, essentially. It sets up for the first violation in any given calendar year, an administrative penalty not to exceed $500. If there's a subsequent violation by the same person within that same year, calendar year, then there's a second viol-, the second penalty of not to exceed $750. If there's a third penalty, a third violation, then the penalty ramps up to $1,000. And then if there's more than three administrative fines during one calendar year, then the violation can be charged as a misdemeanor and be subject to all applicable criminal penalties.
Thank you. I just wanted to make us all aware that we all felt the frustration with bulky items and other rubbish being left in our streets without regard to the public's well-being. And the city spends quite a bit of money picking up those bulky items, as do some of our council offices, and the discretionary funds looking to pick up this rubbish from our streets. This here ordinance will allow us to go after those individuals where the name and address or any proof of ownership is on those, uh, disposed items, and that we will have up to a $1,000 fine for those who continue to fi-, to violate this ordinance. It is doing two things. One, going after those individuals who dump bulky items in the streets, and secondly, getting stiffer penalties for those who continue, uh, to violate this ordinance. So, thank you for your work on this. I know this was, uh, a long time coming, but it'll be good for our city so we could have cleaner streets out there. So, thank you very much.
Welcome. Mr. Labange?
Here with the Bureau of Sanitation?
I'm with the City Attorney's Office.
The City Attorney's Office. And what about people who drop cigarette butts on the street? What are we doing about them? Is that rubbish, or is that a cigarette butt?
I would think that is rubbish. This is, uh, dealing with, uh, the, the ordinance itself deals with combustible, non-combustible rubbish, that would be rubbish.
Now, the question I gotta ask, do you know how many people have been given tickets for littering in the city?
I do not know.
Yes, very few members, so I think there's a way. What's our lowest fine on this?
Uh, under this administrative penalty, it, uh, the lowest level is the first violation, it's administrative penalty not to exceed $500.
Yeah. And members, I've been told, and Mr. Weezer, I've been told the judges don't impose this because of the high fee. I think someone who takes a piece of paper or a cigarette butt and takes it and throws it like that, they should get the same fine of what a street cleaning ticket is, okay? All right, Mr., I gotta get it, I gotta get it right now, Mr. Alacant, I'll pick it up.
Set the street.
I'll pick it up. I got, but you get the message? Did you get the message, Mr. Weezer?
Yes.
Okay?
Coming, making its way through Public Works Committee for the lower fines for items like that.
Right. Is that something that I did before? It's still, is that there?
Yes, that's something you proposed, Mr. Labange.
Good. So I think it's something we should look at, because everything that goes in the street, goes in the gutter, goes down the drain, goes into the creeks, goes into the river, goes into the ocean, and hopefully not into Charlie Tuna, as in there's a recycling of that. So we want to try to keep our, uh, city clean. Mr. Weezer, thanks for the continued effort you have on these large items, and we could do to work well on it. And thank your staff member, I'm sure, Mr. San Ho Ho, who has been very helpful with this. Thank you.
Mr. Labange? Thank you for picking up the paper. Mr. Weezer?
Did you go find Mr. Labange for that?
Uh, Mr. Labange, Mr. Weezer, I want you fined for throwing paper on the floor. Thank you. Any other questions on this, colleagues? No other comments, no other questions. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item thirteen, called special for cards.
Number thirteen. Arnold Sacks, number thirteen, sir.
We only have one's for him, though.
No, I don't, no, they, they...
The shaker?
Yeah, I want the shaker.
Oh, okay.
I told her shaker.
Oh, okay, well, I'm, I'm...
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This involves a inspection fee for, um, inspectors who are doing monitoring, and, you know, it kind of boggles the mind, because in today's, or yesterday's LA downtown news, there's a story about Broadway battles the sign of the times. And, um, it states in this story regarding, uh, the, the Building and Safety, Department of Building and Safety is issuing violations for advertising signage, different signage letters. And you want about oversight. So they're issuing violations against these properties that have been in business for 10, 20, 30 years, yet where was the oversight when AEG, that wonderful corporate neighbor, was able to get its billboard rights without the Department of Building and Safety being involved in the vetting of those rights? Where is the oversight? Who is doing the annual inspections for oversight of what's going on with these departments and the money laundering that goes on, the, the greasing of the pockets? A wonderful corporate entity like AEG is able to get its rights fully vetted without having any oversight? And then, you know, you say that, and you kind of think about that congressman who apologized to a BP. It's just as sleazy. But, again, what is the criteria for the oversight? These businesses are in good standing for 10, 20 years, and they're gonna be checked out when a business that didn't even exist was vetted right?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you for your comments. Uh, colleagues, matters before us. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item fourteen, called special by Councilmember Cacorian.
Mr. Cacorian, number fourteen.
Well, if I could, Mr. President, for starters, I'd like the City Attorney's Office to come up and, um, and provide a presentation on this matter. And in particular, um, while I understand the Citizens United case has changed to the landscape of the law in this area, uh, my particular question is, why is it necessary for the city to act affirmatively to repeal its ordinance, rather than assuming, based on the reasoning of Citizens United, that it is unconstitutional and unenforceable? What is the reason that we need to act as a body to affirmatively repeal the existing ordinance? Because that, uh, for reasons that I'll get into later, that, that rubs me the wrong way in more ways than I can tell you. Um, but, um, but I think it would be helpful for all of my colleagues for you to provide a brief overview of what the Citizens United case did, how that relates to the Los Angeles City Ethics Ordinance, and why we need to repeal it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rene Stod-, Deputy City Attorney Rene Stodl. In January of this year, the United States Supreme Court, uh, issued its decisions in what's referred to as the Citizens United, um, case, Citizens United versus FEC. That case, um, in the, in that case, the Supreme Court decided and struck down federal provisions that prohibited corporations and unions from spending directly from their treasuries. In the course of that opinion, in that decision, the Supreme Court identified as the only appropriate governmental reason to impose such restrictions as quid pro quo corruption, um, quid pro quo corruption. In that case, it did uphold the existing disclosure and disclaimer requirements that the federal government had. Since then, uh, the Ninth Circuit has ruled on, on restrictions regarding contributions to committees that make independent expenditures. On April 30th, the Ninth Circuit issued its ruling regarding the Long, Long Beach Ordinance that restricted contributions to independent expenditure committees. In that decision, the Ninth Circuit embraced the, the reasoning of the Citizens United case, as well as other courts, including, uh, the District of Columbia Circuit and Fourth Circuit case, in their decisions when they struck down, uh, contribution limits to committees that make independent expenditures. Other, uh, district courts in California and around the country have been striking down these contribution limits to committees that make independent expenditures, because they have concluded that there is not a close connection to a candidate, um, between the candidate and these types of committees, and therefore, there's no justification to impose such restrictions. And some courts have actually concluded that these restrictions are essentially limits on making independent expenditures. We also have a pending case regarding these contribution limits. Last week, the Ethics Commission did adopt a resolution that it had no intent to enforce the city's provisions, and there are... are three. There's an ordinance provision, and there are two provisions in the city charter, one relating to city elections and the other relating to Los Angeles Unified School District elections, that was adopted just a couple of years ago. Because of the compelling authority in this area, we do not believe we can successfully defend this provision any longer. We believe it's necessary to repeal the provision, the ordinance provision, and that ordinance is before you today and in the future, near future, to place the charter provisions on the ballot for repeal. There are a couple of reasons why we think it's necessary for repeal as opposed to simply non-enforcement of the provisions. The...so long as we have the provisions on the book, we are subject to a lawsuit, which we would have to defend. And in fact, we do have a pending lawsuit that we have pending right now. So long as we have it on the books, we are subject to lawsuit and potential liability, and that is why we strongly recommend that you adopt this ordinance today. And if you have further questions, I'll try to answer them.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate Mr. Kukorian asking those questions. I frankly find this an incredible assault on the whole concept of the democracy. If you think corporate America owns the political process and it's corrupt, this completely gives them the whole story. It's already pretty much controlled by the rich people, our democracy. I mean, big-time control. All this does is take away it and go right back to the wild, wild west of insanity. It's like the final stamp on killing the democracy. There's no way I can support it, even if the Supreme Court did it, just like they elected that other guy Bush when, in fact, the people voted for Gore. This group of people there need to actually, when the President of the United States got up in the State of the Union address and he looked at them and said what he said, he was right on the mark. And I'm not going to add to their insanity and vote that way. Thank you.
Mr. Parks.
Okay. Don't go away. Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering if you could just give us very succinctly what the court decision says, and then what is in our charter and our administrative codes that are asked to be changed?
The most directly on point court decision is the Ninth Circuit's decision on the Long Beach Chamber of Commerce PAC versus Long Beach. That decision ruled unconstitutional Long Beach's ordinance provision that limited contributions to committees that make independent expenditures as applicable to that organization's PAC and all similarly situated parties. The provisions that we have in city law are very, very similar and essentially do the same thing. There is a provision in the city charter, 470(c)(5) that's been in our charters since nineteen, I believe, eighty-four, nineteen eighty-five. And we have another provision in the charter that we included with the LAUSD campaign finance measures. We also have a ordinance provision, LAMC 49.7.24, that does exactly the same thing.
And that ordinance, what is, gives guidance to ethics? Is that primarily for the ordinance?
Well, no. It's a prohibition. If you violate it, you're subject to penalties, and there have been, there have been enforcement cases in the past. And so, having it on the books subjects an offender to potential civil, criminal, and administrative penalties. I would also note that our campaign finance ordinance has a provision that allows a private party to sue someone under a private right of action.
Okay, so that's the issue in a nutshell. So, by this court decision, we're going to have to change, in fact, has ethics already made a change?
They have, they have said, based on, based on these court decisions and based on our advice, that they will not enforce these decisions, or these provisions.
All right. So, that they were doing an ordinance to take it out of the administrative code, and then the next step would go to charter?
That's right. It's actually in the municipal code base.
Municipal code, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, you know, I think a lot of the members, a lot of the public is unaware of the phenomenon of independent expenditure campaigns. And so I think it's important that we put this into a little bit of a context. If a special interest group wants to make a contribution to a campaign of a candidate for city council, for city council, they're limited to a $500 maximum contribution. But if that very same special interest group decides to influence the outcome of a city council race, they can spend $500,000. They could spend $5 million independently to influence the outcome of a campaign. I know this pretty well, because in the course of my campaign, almost a million dollars in independent expenditure, expenditures were made against me. And I appreciate you mentioning the lawsuit that the city is now a part of to defend the city's ethics laws, because I was a party to that lawsuit as well, and we won. And we successfully defended the city's ethics restrictions on contributions to independent expenditure committees. The problem is, the Supreme Court, as Mr. Rosendahl said, has gutted the ability of state and local governments now to try to restrict contributions to independent expenditure campaigns. And it is a continuing decline in our ability to keep campaign finance accountable and transparent. And what happens with independent expenditure campaigns, and what will happen even more after this city ordinance is repealed, is that people will be able to, special interests will be able to consolidate their money, $25,000 contributions here, $20,000 here, $50,000 there, into a single pot, call themselves Angelinos for a brighter future, or, you know, voters committed to a green tomorrow, and no voter will ever be able to know where this money came from, because it will be concealed under layer and layer and layer of committees that give to committees that give to committees that give to committees. And unless there's an independent analysis made by some investigative reporter, no voter will ever have the information they need to make an informed decision as they would if contributions are made directly to candidates. So, I'm going to be introducing a motion today. And I, I'm sorry, but I can't bring myself to support this repeal just because it sticks in my craw too much to do it, even though I respect and understand the reasons that you're saying as to, for practical reasons, why it's important. But going forward, I think this council needs to look very carefully at what policy, what policy directions we can go in to try to get a handle on this runaway phenomenon of the takeover of independent expenditure campaigns. And Mr. Weezer has done tremendous work in having his town hall forums on campaign finance reform, and has done a lot of important analysis of these issues, which I appreciate. I've done some legislative work on this in Sacramento, and I'm going to be introducing a motion today to significantly enhance the disclosure requirements about, for contributions to independent expenditure campaigns. So, at least if we have to live with this abomination of a Supreme Court decision, if we have to live with that, at least what we should do is, as you mentioned, the Supreme Court did uphold disclosure requirements. So, the least we should do is have the strongest possible disclosure requirements that we can to make sure that voters are armed with the information that they need to either be influenced in a positive or a negative direction by the amount of independent expenditure money that's flowing into a campaign. So, I'm going to be introducing that motion today, and thank you very much for your report.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. And it just occurred to me, is, do we, are we aware of any efforts by Congress to undo this Supreme Court decision?
There, there are various efforts that are ongoing. As you likely have read in the newspaper, the main, the main legislation that's pending at the federal level is what's referred to as the Disclose Act. And so, it attempts to not undo the decision because it's not possible, absent a constitutional amendment, but to enhance certain other disclosure requirements regarding campaigns and in relation to corporations.
But there, so there is an effort, I mean, we can undo it because it's a Supreme Court decision, but there are efforts to get more disclosure, Mr. Kukorian described it, and to help us better see where this money's coming from. Now, in your thinking about waiting to see what develops out of those congressional hearings, you're recommending that we better decide, move this language out now, because we may get sued, rather than wait for those deliberations to...
We actually, not only me, we get sued, we currently have a pending case.
Yeah, okay. So, it's better to do it now. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a final comment. Many of you know that we use the airwaves, the people own the airwaves, but yet, in the eighties, they were given away to the broadcasters, and the broadcasters sell soap, and that drives eyeballs. That's why we just had an election just now. And I tell you, there's no way to figure out who to vote for, because you get a stupid little handbill, and that's it, and everybody's great, 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 great. Bottom line is, our democracy is in peril. I think this is another step in the wrong direction. And if we vote yes for this, we're just agreeing with those folks in the Supreme Court that I think made a very scurrilous, unconstitutional ruling. Thank you.
That completes the comments, and matters now before us for a vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
And the ordinance will go over one week.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item fifteen called special for cards.
Number fifteen, Dr. Williams. Mr. Reyes.
Can we move item thirteen forthwith, please?
Thirteen forthwith. Thank you. Dr. Williams, your turn, sir.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Berrard, El Sreino, Northeast LA. What do I know about ports? Well, I worked for Dubai World for about ten years, that's why. But the ICF, what's the importance of the ICF? Well, it's a fee. How about the fact that the port is one of the responsible parties involved in the State Route 710 North Extension Tunnel Project, and justifies at least one lane of the tunnel project going through Northeast LA, our communities? What will be the cost of it? Maybe they should add it to the ICF. It'll be approximately $500,000 to $800,000 a day in operations and maintenance costs, and will be approximately $2.5 billion for their share of the tunnel. So, we'd highly recommend that the ICF, somewhat like the ECAF, be raised by board action to reflect the associated off-site indirect impacts of their projects, because they are funding the trucks to get to the edge of the port, then the city does from the edge of the port to the edge of the freeway, and Caltrans, MTA does the freeways. Thank you.
Very well. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item eighteen called special for cards.
Number eighteen, Arnold Sachs, followed by Dr. Williams.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Kukorian. Just really quickly, wanted to know your opponent, the funding that they got. Whatever happened to her? Oh, that's right, she's sitting on the CRA. This item, I'm just curious, the financial impact statement, it's a contract for $4 million. $1.3 million has been spent on, against the contract. What was the contract for? An EIR, EIR, EIS? Now, you need to add another $400,000 to finish the EIR. But it says in here that $3.8 million has been committed to other projects. The contract, well, if the contract is for $4 million, $4 million, and $3.8 million has been committed to other contracts, how could you spend $1.3 million on an EIS, EIR? And again, what is the contract for? Was it for an EIS, EIR? Why wasn't that done first? And then, these other contracts, other commitments added on, so that the public is aware of what's going on? Never mind the fact that it's a proprietary department and has no answerable accord to the city or the city council, never mind that money's up in smoke. But the idea that you actually put this stuff in print and expect the public to accept it and not catch on is mind-boggling. So, again, what was the original contract for? And why wasn't the original work done? This is just like the Wilshire bus lanes that have been EIR, EIS to death. And when it all comes down to being said and done, why don't you just Rosky it? You know, like the stadium that he wants to build, the sixty and the seven ten?
Thank you.
Just cancel the EIR, EIS.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Dr. Williams, please.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sreino. Why didn't they know that this was going to come before? Why wasn't it part of the original scope that was bitted? I don't know. But we do know that it'll probably be even more, so you can expect another CDM amendment to come in. This is only their second one, so they can go for another three, third one, fourth one, maybe. Because what they have produced will be deemed inadequate, incomplete, and insufficient to support the assessments that they are making for the APL. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And that matter is before us. See no one on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item twenty called special for cards.
Let's go to the San Fernando Valley, Donna Pierman and Maryn Volger. San Fernando Valley, please. Ladies?
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, we can't be giving these things to the new homeowners, it looks like here. When we're having our city layoffs, we're having lots of problems, as it is with the city and its budget, and these, having these people having new homes when they can't even afford them, it's a wrong idea. And I don't think it's right with the many homeowners who can't seem to get any break on their mortgage, and the ones are regular, middle-class people who need help with the high cost of their houses. And these people who haven't had yet a house, go over there and give them a house. It's, this should be the ones who have been paying all along for many, many years, should be the ones getting the help to, to be sure that they keep their homes and then they keep it, to give it to their kids. And instead, we give it over to these other people who can't even afford, later on down the line, will probably be losing these homes, to the ones that they're giving these homes to. They say, isn't this a nice thing that we're giving these homes to these people? But, and, uh, later on, because they never, didn't really have the money to pay for these homes in the first place, and their paycheck is not high enough for a home, they should be in apartments, because they can't afford these homes in the first place. It's just a temporary thing for these people. And later on, they won't have the money, and they'll be, they'll probably foreclose on these homes. This is not a right thing. If you can't afford a home in the first place, have the normal about money for these homes in the first place, and you definitely don't have the money, then this is, then this is just a temporary thing, just to look like, look nice in front of these people. They'll lose it. So will you.
Thank you.
Just buy votes.
Maryn Volger. And then we'll come back to Arnold Sachs.
This is just a way to buy votes, huh, folks? You know, the city's in a budget crisis. They've already, you know, by the way, Arnold Sachs, the contract was violated. We didn't get, they're supposed to get raises. They was not supposed to do any layoffs this year. So, they violated the contract. It's their fault for the layoffs. Furthermore, the furloughs are against the law, too. The, because how can anybody have, be in a home if you're going to put people on the street, layoffs and furloughs, folks? You know, you're not... You know, if you're not following the, the union's contracts, that's what they have them for. So you people, don't run over people, make them get paid only $8.10 an hour like it's food for less. How can anybody be in a home in the city of Los Angeles making $8.10 an hour? You're a, you're a chutzpah, Arnold Sachs, that's a chutzpah. Because you know those people that, you know, you defend. They, they should be coming down and, and demanding to get the same salaries and same things that the unions that have here down LA, instead of you want to take them down here. I think this is a, a very destructive thing that you're doing, because this is going against the grain, folks. This housing thing that you, we want to push, well, the banks don't even give the homeowners breaks, especially people who are in their senior years, you know, and they owe more on their homes. What about them? What about, what about a break for them? How about, why is it only for a few people getting this? This is very unfair, unfair housing practice and discriminatory, in my opinion, that it shouldn't be done, period. And secondly, that if you're not going to be hiring people in the state of LA, you're laying off people, and you're putting in more to him hiring and doing all the stuff Antonio talked about, he, he has his agenda just for upper office, forget it. I'm not for that $40 billion thing that's going to turn into a $1 trillion debt.
Thank you. Dr. Arnold Sachs, our final speaker on this matter.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sachs. I just wanted to make sure that this funding is coming from a state agency, not, and, and they are getting the funding from, hopefully not one of the banks that you are so concerned about being on the list, financial institutions that are suing the city, because wouldn't that be ironic also, that you didn't know, or you haven't passed the information on to the state, that you don't want to take money from a bank that you have a lawsuit against, because it would be unethical. And for the city council to be, enter into any unethical agreement, well, that's almost as bad as like, let's say, Helen Keller being the color commentary for a boxing match. It just doesn't seem to work out. The fact that you would consider ethics when accepting money, doesn't work out at all. Like that, Mr. Alacon?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Seeing no one on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, next item, please. Mr. Alacon.
Fourth with?
Fourth with on that matter. Thank you, Mr. Alacon.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posting referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, Mr. Reyes.
Adjourned.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labonge.
I've arrived yesterday morning at 4:34 in the morning. Summer is here.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Put your sunblock on, then. Any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, adjourned motions? Please stand for adjourned motions. Please stand for adjourned motions. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Eldora Winston, who passed away at the age of 76 recently. She was a resident of the Watts Community for 56 years. Eldora was a devoted and faithful servant of Mount Beulah Missionary Baptist Church in Los Angeles, where she served in the usher ministry, church secretary, clerk, reporter, and taught Sunday School. She was also a member of the mission ministry and served as the president of the Senior Usher Ministry for more than 40 years. She was also the chairperson, appointed by my office, of the Watts Community Development Advisory Committee, that are known as WIDAC, the cleanup, beautification of South Central Los Angeles and youth programs such as summer jobs, Big Brother, drug eradication, and numerous charities for the homeless. Eldora received countless awards and recognition, recognition for her tireless dedication to improving the lives of others. She's survived by three siblings, Dallas, Alan, and Elizabeth, four children, Freddie, Ida, Roosevelt Jr., and Reginald, 18 grandchildren, four great-grandchildren, and many nieces, nephews, relatives, and friends. Services are being held on this Friday at 11:00 AM at the Mount Beulah Missionary Baptist Church. We will miss Eldora greatly. She was, again, one of those great community activists that really worked tirelessly to improve her community.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Curtis Hill today. He died this past 26th of May. Curtis was born in Newman, Georgia in 1937, the oldest son of seven children. Curtis graduated from Howard High School in Chattanooga, Tennessee in 1955, and went on to serve his country in the United States Air Force as an air policeman. Upon honorable discharge from the Air Force, he was the first in the Hill family to migrate to Los Angeles. His six brothers and sisters followed him shortly thereafter. Curtis proceeded to further his education at California State University, Los Angeles, where he received his Bachelor of Science in Business Administration. Upon completing his higher education, Curtis was employed with the City of Los Angeles, where he worked for 20 years. Curtis Hill began his career with the city on January 5, 1987, as a tax and permit field representative in the office of the city clerk's tax and permit division, and finished his career in the TAPS unit. His leadership skills and knowledge were responsible for the successful processing of well over 1 million annual business tax renewals resulting in more than $2 billion in timely revenue to the city. Curtis resided in the El Srinno area of my district and was an active member of the community. He will be cherished in memory and sadly missed by his wife of 10 years, Linda Hill, his two daughters, Melanie Hill and Stacy Hill, his two living brothers, Robert Hill and Calvin Hill, three stepchildren, Cassandra, Catherine, and Christie, and six grandchildren, along with a host of nieces, nephews, other relatives, and friends.
Adjourned motion, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you. I ask for adjourned in memory of Edmund Simontian, who was a beautiful man who came from Armenia in 1976 with under $100 in his pocket. He took a taxi into Hollywood and started his life there. He migrated here, immigrated here with his wife of over 40 years, Vicky. In that, he created Edmund's Furniture Store on Melrose Avenue, right between Van Ness Avenue and Wilton, right there. And his love was that building and his work. He also participated most recently in the campaign to save Coringa Peak. Called out in the blue and said, I've loved Hollywood, I wanted to do something about it, donated $2,000 to the Trust for Public Land. We had a little ceremony just a couple of months ago. He renovated his hotel, or the building that he expanded from a little storefront to a new hotel in Hollywood. It was a tragedy to his family and friends, and he truly was an inspirational man who came to this country with under $100 as an immigrant. And, and truly is remarkable, the services of this afternoon, I ask for adjourned in memory of Edmund Simontian, a great, great individual who got called far too early, survived by his wife of 40 years, Vicky, and his daughter and son.
Mr. Kukorian, on that? Add Mr. Kukorian on that, the adjourned motion. Other adjourned motions, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. And colleagues, I adjourn today a city's council meeting in loving memory of Kareem Hanna, a dear young friend to Lincoln Heights community who passed away on September 18th, 2009, aged 12. Kareem is the son of Bob Hanna, who owns two gasoline stations in Lincoln Heights, but more importantly, he's been a very strong supporter of the community, strong supporter of the police department, and they are with us today. Kareem attended San Rafael Elementary School in Pasadena, where he enjoyed learning math. He played on the basketball team and loved teaching his friends magic tricks. Kareem had many young friends in Lincoln Heights, as he would visit him quite often at his father's store. They liked watching Laker games and playing on the computer. He's also a friend of the LAPD's Harlem Back Division. At three years of age, Kareem was diagnosed with an autoimmune deficiency. Sadly, in September 2009, Kareem was rushed to the hospital, where he passed away two weeks from pneumonia. Kareem had a long life ahead of him. He dreamed of someday becoming a doctor in internal medicine. And colleagues, a very special young man, and I wanted to acknowledge the family who's here, and I thanked them for the patience, because we kept trying to do this, but the meetings kept dragging out, and the whole family wanted to be here. So I'd like to acknowledge them and thank them for their presence. Bob and Jeanette, the parents, daughters Karen and Katrina, grandmother Lila, Soha, uncles Milad, John and Asim, cousin Tanya, and family friends, Rami, Hadi, Amin, and Mark, and our LAPD officers, Pedrosa and Morales. Thank you for being here. It's very special to have you here today, and again, our heart goes out to your family, and we want to make sure you adjourn in his, in his honor. Thank you very much. Can we do all members?
All members on that. Our condolences to the family that's here. Any other adjourned motions, colleagues? This concludes this meeting. Mr. Quirk, please call the roll. Thank you. This concludes the meeting for today. We will return tomorrow.